Let's call our meeting to order and rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening.
Hi.
Good. It's good to have Bob here, have him back. First of all, let's approve the July 19 workshop minutes.
Move for approval.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There's none?
Move for approval.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
How much carries? Do we know where they are?
They should be on your desk.
It's right there for them, of course. I was just testing you. Okay.
Go test Bobby.
Yeah. Okay, next up, Jeff Claster.
Yes ma'am. So, what we need to do, and what we're asking your help on, is as part of the Help program, we were awarded a $20,000 grant from OPRC to help us pay the cost of the community coordinator, so that field's salary. It took until a week, maybe a week and a half ago, to actually get that process through OPRC. So we now have the money in hand. Needs to be appropriated, and then we will need to do, at your meeting in October with Personnel, we'll need to do a salary ordinance amendment that will allow us to pay $20,000 of their salary out of this grant.
Okay.
And then the balance of it will be paid out of the ARPA funds that have already been appropriated for it. So, it's a one-time grant of $20,000. It needs to be expended by the end of October. And so the plan would be to go retroactively to July the first, pay that essentially three or four months of salary that would expend the $20,000 out of that grant. Then we meet all the criteria for OPRC to get the grant spent, and then we'll go back to using the ARPA funds for the rest of this year and next year. So that was, we agreed to fill that position for two years, initially at least.
So we need to get that advertised for our October meeting? Is there time?
Correct.
It's advertised for this meeting.
It is advertised for this meeting?
This meeting.
Oh, that's awesome.
So the appropriation can be done tonight?
Yes ma'am.
Oh, good.
Sorry.
Yes, sorry.
Just don't call me late for dinner. So, okay, so we need the appropriation, and then the changes to the salary ordinance will be at the...
October Personnel.
Personnel.
So I have a question. Did you say that this is just a one-time, or will it be another one?
It'll be every year.
No, it's just $20,000.
Okay. Sir, do we have any additional appropriation?
It's not, it's not property tax dollars, so I don't...
Oh, that's true. Okay. So...
Well, it needs to be advertised, so it must be a public hearing.
Is it advertised as a public hearing? Ron wasn't able to be here tonight, and he said, "Will you be able to..." Will you have any questions? I said, "Oh, we'll be okay."
We didn't even make the five minutes.
I know, but here we are. We need Ron.
Well, at least we got the pledge.
Let's just have a hearing just in case we need it, and then we've done it, okay? So let's open up a public hearing right now, and I will take any discussion or comments on the appropriation. If they aren't, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Now I'll entertain a motion to do take from Fund 8105, zero zero eight nine one, for $20,000, into Fund 10130, the community coordinator salary.
So move.
And make it retroactive to July 1st, right?
Well, that will be part of the salary ordinance.
Okay, okay, okay. Gotcha.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. All right, what about your ARPA funds?
What about my ARPA funds, Bobby? We need to...
What about your ARPA funds?
Do we need a transfer, to request a transfer?
Was this the...
Yes.
Status of balance?
I thought we were gonna do that as part of the discussion later on, so...
She stopped something.
She's looking.
I'm looking.
I'm not sure that we have...
I'm not sure what the ARPA funds was.
I can tell you that we continue to make progress. We are actively seeking community input to some of the projects that are, have been approved as the Help program. We're gonna have a discussion here in a few minutes. Beth, you just need to sign.
I just need to sign. Okay, gotcha.
We're gonna have a discussion about where we're at with ARPA expenditures, appropriations, and as part of that, we'll have a discussion on the remaining uncommitted ARPA dollars. I sent out to you a couple, a week or two ago, a list of topics that I had collected from various sources that we wanna review and then comment on. Commissioners had a discussion at our meeting this morning. We added a few things to that list. But we wanna start the conversation of how are we gonna spend the uncommitted ARPA dollars, which is about 4.8 million. And so we'll have that discussion after. This is the plan.
Sounds good.
And we need to have a plan on that by...
We report quarterly on what we have done currently. The commitments for that funding have to be made by the end of next year, 2024. They have to be expended by the end of 2026. And some of those, because they're not
They just have...
They're not construction projects, would actually have to be spent by the end of 2024. But we've got, you know, 15 months or so to nail all that down. But it seemed to me that it was appropriate to start those conversations. I'm sure we won't all say, "Oh yeah, that's the final list."
I was just thinking, there's a lot of things to do on the budget.
There are. And we don't have to have significant discussion on it tonight. I wanna introduce it, say, 10 or 15 minutes of discussion to bring you up to speed on where we're at.
Okay. Next up, we need to transfer funds for the Grant Clerk from County General to Plat Room to the Grant Clerk line item. Can you, Mark, do you wanna explain this?
It's two different issues.
Okay.
Don't confuse them because they're not connected.
Okay.
In the Plat Room, I've agreed to go ahead and pay Nancy's salary completely from that money, which would require moving her out of my office budget to the Plat Room office budget. To run the rest of the year, this year, let me find it, we need $5,369.59. That is on top of what we already have in that budget, which is a percentage. What that does then is open up the position in my office for the new gal that we, well, I'm gonna hire. After we moved Nancy to the Plat Room, it leaves a balance in Nancy's salary in my office. That is not enough to take the new gal to the rest of the year. In addition to that, Nancy's salary for next year is not in the Plat Room budget. So we need to put that in for '24. That's it, isn't it?
Where's your...
Yeah, we'll talk about that in a little bit, that part of it.
There wasn't enough...
There's not gonna be enough.
Not enough left for Nancy's, and so we were transferring some from contractual professional in order to make up the difference for the Grant Clerk.
Okay. And then we'll talk about in '24, because I think the fund is not gonna sustain that salary. We may have to put a little bit of it back in your budget and most of it out of the Plat Room. We'll talk about that over a little bit.
What about Nancy's?
Yes, yes. So we just need to make these two transfers right here to
Yes.
get things right for the rest of this year.
That's for this year only.
Now, this is, on my paper, the amount was 537040.
537040 is what's left of County General of Nancy's that's going towards the Grant Clerk.
To the Grant Clerk, okay.
And then 278480 will be going from
Contractual.
Contractual Professional to the Grant Clerk. And then the additional appropriation of 536959 in the Plat Room, 1181, for, to finish Nancy out for the rest of the year.
And where's that coming from?
I'm asking, I have to do an additional appropriation for it.
There's a lot of money in there.
Okay.
It's just an additional appropriation.
And so we'll have to advertise that and do that transfer at, what next?
Which should be the Grant Clerk's line? Do we have a line for that?
Okay, so I just need a motion for what you see on your agenda here, though, all the fund numbers and the amounts. We've got two different transfers. Can we do them together?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion by Tony.
Second.
Second by Gary, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. And we will do the additional appropriation for 536959 at our next meeting, when it has been advertised. Is this my joint ordinance coming up? Do you have that?
All this goes up there.
Okay, next up, we've been talking about the joint ordinance for the remaining jail bond fund.
All in favor.
And, yeah, I think we have to sign three copies. So we have joint ordinance number 2023-01. It's an ordinance of the fiscal and legislating bodies pursuant to Indiana Code 36-1-3 to document compliance with ICE 6-3.6-7.23. Y'all got that? That means a lot to everybody, doesn't it? So this is the final distribution of the jail bond fund to the highway. So I just need a motion to pass this ordinance?
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Joint, joint orders for jail bond fund, number 2023...
Dash 01.
It says 09 on here.
Says 09 here.
Says 01 on here, on all the, these are the originals, so I think it's 01.
Okay.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Here are none. All right.
We also need to...
Oh, do you have to do it too?
We need to approve this. This is a joint resolution.
Oh yeah, it is joint.
Make motion, have we approved ordinance 2023-01?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve joint ordinance number 2023-01. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same side. Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have Christine Simpson with us from the Health Department.
Good evening. Thank you for making time for me. This is the public, or the new Health First Indiana Fund. So, as you know, after all of the counties opted in, they took the amount that was left over. There were six counties that did not opt in. So they took that money that was allocated to them and split it amongst the counties that did opt in. That was basically an additional, about $29,400, just a little over that, for Wayne County. So I submitted a budget to you, and what we've asked for is to use that money to do digital file storage, to start, being able to start digitizing some of our files and getting rid of all the papers, to have a monthly subscription to the Indiana Health Information Exchange. That is a, an agency that you get a subscription to. Once they approve you to be in that, not just anyone can be in that, you have to have proper providers and things like that. But it would allow us to be able to see all the health exchange information in all of the hospitals in Indiana that are part of this, a lot of ambulatory services. Some behavioral health services are involved in this. We utilize that program when we're doing our fetal infant mortality reviews and our suicide and overdose reviews. We have to get a lot of medical records when we're doing those, and those are part of the core services that we do. So this would allow us to be able to get that information a lot faster than, you know, filling out a public, or a medical request form to a hospital in Indianapolis, where we could just go in ourselves and ascertain all of the information that we need. That's $1,500 a year to do that, and that's based on the number of providers that we have at the Health Department. And then the last thing that we're asking for is, it's called hidden in plain sight trailer. And what we'd like to do is have it back to school fair, where we're doing a lot of different things and bringing all of our partners together, backpack for kids, doing immunizations and all of that stuff. But also invite this hidden in plain sight, because what that is, it's set up just like a child's room, a teenager's room, and parents go through that, and then they go through it with the facilitator. And the facilitator points out all of the things that are hidden in plain sight that helps parents to see if their child is smoking, vaping, or using drugs. There's a lot of things that are just hidden in plain sight. So it's really an awareness program for parents to help their children if they are starting down the road of drug, tobacco use, or vaping. And that takes up the $29,000. But I think it's good things that we would be able to utilize a little.
I agree.
Does anybody have questions for Christine and I about the budget? We need to approve this budget for tonight.
Yes, so that's the new budget. I have to submit it to, say, by the 25th. And so, and I did let them know, you guys are putting us on really tight deadlines, you know, so. I appreciate you getting me in on for this meeting.
So do we have, if you don't have questions, do I have a motion to approve the revised budget?
Is this where we're going to move the $10,000?
We haven't talked about that. You wanna, you can talk to Christine about that right now.
Yeah, so that was, that was in your original, the original budget that you put in there. I also had to put it in 1159 because we hadn't opted in yet. So it was in that original budget that you approved for the XRF machine?
No, we're talking, we're talking about, all your phones will be paid by IT right now?
Oh, I don't know about this.
Yeah.
Kathy sent us an email, said she talked to her about it.
I talked to you about that, remember? I said we're moving $10,000 from IT, putting it into your budget for those items. You said, "Oh, okay."
Okay.
Should we put that in your regular, your regular budget somewhere?
Okay.
Or this supplemental budget for the extra?
I think we can put it in the regular budget, because I emailed Tony that he could take out that $10,000 for the XRF, because we put it in here, so that's kind of a swap.
It's kind of a swap, okay. That's good.
So that, yeah, I do, I'm sorry Kathy.
We'll do that in a little while. That's perfect.
So then we're gonna add that $10,000 to that line?
In your regular budget, let alone which line we're gonna put it in.
Yeah, we'll put a line.
Because I think it's zero at the moment. Okay.
Okay, all right. So Commissioners, have you approved her budget? Did you do that today?
We did not.
Oh, okay, so we all need to do that tonight, right?
It wouldn't hurt. Yeah, I mean, we normally don't approve those budgets, but since this is a special...
I thought you needed to give her permission for that. Okay, so we just need a motion to approve, everyone got sent that budget in the email this week, so you have time to look it over.
I have copies if anyone would like to refresh their memory on it.
I think we've all seen it, if anybody...
Did that go to everybody, or just...
I think it went to all of us. It came to everybody. So I will make the motion that we approve the, oh, yes?
So the 216 to 218 in Personnel, that is no new employees, that's working with other...
It's been moved to contractual. You moved that line item down, right? Maybe people have seen the...
So I did move that to avoid any confusion into other services, because this is like where I'm contracting for the paramedicine.
Okay.
Moved it out of this, so there is no confusion, that those are counting employees.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that's good.
And I, I'll resend this out, because I did make that move, and I just did that, add the request.
Yeah, and I saw the email where you suggested you do that. Okay. All right, so go ahead Kathy.
Let's see, what was I gonna say? So I will make the motion to approve the, I don't know, do we wanna call it updated? Is that Health First Indiana Budget?
I would say the final, Health First Indiana Fund.
Final Health First Indiana Budget.
I would second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. All right, motion passes.
I moved the initial, passed the health budget. But you do not want that to include the $29,000? That'll be a separate motion?
No, no.
No, it's all...
It's all advised.
It's revised to include the additional $29,000.
So a motion, we have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same side. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, our HR.
Christine, we need that.
Kim Claster?
Okay. So the first one we have, we actually tonight have three salary ordinance amendments. First one is Salary Ordinance Amendment Number Six for the Auditor's Office. We need to create line item 10709 for the Grant Clerk, which is a Comet Two. It will be 40 hours a week at $16.99 per hour. That effective date will be October the 2nd, 2023.
Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Gary, second by Tony, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none.
Salary Ordinance Amendment Number Seven. This is for the Sheriff. This is a position, title change only. So we are changing line item 10800 Civil Process Server Officer, civilian pole two, 40 hours a week. That's at $21.80 per hour. That will be changed, title changed, to Animal Control Officer/Civil Process Server Officer, and that will be a civilian pole two, 40 hours, $21.80 per hour. That will have an effective date of September the 11th of 2023.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. That one passes.
Okay. And the second one, that's gonna be Salary Ordinance Amendment Number Eight. Again, Sheriff's Department, again, same thing, position, title change only. So we're gonna change line item 12562, Part-Time Animal Control Officer, civilian pole two, 29 hours a week, $21.80 per hour. The change will be Part-Time Civil Process Server Officer, again, same classification, $21.80 per hour, with the same effective date of September the 11th, 2023.
Move.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. They're all done. Thank you for all that. We just wanna express our condolences to Kim for the loss of her mother last week.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
This is a tough timing here, and you've been busy, and that's been a lot on you, so.
Thank you.
Okey dokey.
I have one thing I might pass out on Personnel.
Okay.
This is an updated sheet of the, we've seen this earlier from the '23 and '24. It's just updated from what we've done over the past two to three weeks. If there's any questions, we'd be glad to talk, but I think it's pretty self-help, but it's just updated.
Thank you for that.
We need to know what passed around, I got a couple more.
I think we got enough. Okay. Tony, I think it's time that we can start talking about the budget.
Okay.
Do you wanna do our project update in ARPA first?
Oh, I see, he's, she's got budgets down there. I didn't see it. That's fine, we'll let you do your update.
Okay.
Okay.
Steve, wanna do the project update?
Yep. Yeah, the sheet in front of you, you've seen before, although this is gonna change just a little bit from the last time you looked at it. We're going to, when we complete a project, you'll see it one time, it'll turn green, and then it'll be removed the next time you see it. So the only thing you see on here will be active projects. The completed projects will be archived in another spreadsheet, if you ever wanna look at that. So the key things to look at here is item number three and item number four, or five, and that's the courthouse exterior project and the courthouse bathrooms. I got an email today, and they still believe that they're gonna finish the bathrooms by the end of this month. And so we'll have our punch list sometime in October, so that amount will become due, obviously, this year. And same way with the courthouse exterior, they're still believing that they will finish before winter. So again, that entire amount, there'll be a pay app submitted for that. So the key thing there is, down at the lower right-hand corner, is that 1.8 is what we have committed to in projects thus far, and in that council one-time expenditure line item, there's a balance of about $344,000. So this is something I've been keeping you up to speed on. I would probably ask, at least by your October meeting, you know, how you wanna handle that? Do you wanna continue to spend that into the red? Do you wanna do a transfer? How you wanna handle that as these claims come in?
It's important to point out, it's not in the red right now.
Right.
It's at a balance of $343,000. But when that $640,000 for courthouse exterior comes due, then it's gonna go into the red, obviously. So you guys sort out how you wanna do it on the timing, but we're still essentially one and a half million dollars additional that needs to be appropriated to cover just the projects that we're talking about on this list. Additional that needs to be appropriated to cover just the projects that we're talking about on this list.
So since those things were not encumbered from last year, that those funds reverted back into the general funds.
Correct, so they're there, they're just not, not appropriate.
May be appropriate to appropriate out of, you know, that, out of the general fund to.
And that's, that's what we would anticipate, but, you know, it's up to you how you wanna, how you wanna handle that. If you recall again, we did, uh, come and, and request an encumbrance, that didn't happen. And so, um, we continued the projects and we're gonna be essentially, uh, short by the amount that we had asked to encumber in last year.
So we're gonna appropriate that next week when you get that advertised.
We need that advertised.
Advertised, so I think it might be too late to do.
We may have to appropriate it to November.
Man.
Or workshop.
We can advertise at the workshop.
Okay.
Might as well be to appropriate the funds needed to cover this.
To cover it all, yeah.
Kind of that.
So, is that the one point eight?
Save it as what else.
The one point eight?
No, well, it should be one point eight less than three forty.
Right, so essentially.
Unless we wanted to leave some in that fund.
Well.
Well, we've got some other things.
We have other things that.
Yeah, you're right.
We better do the whole thing.
Probably have to do the whole thing.
Okay, so we'll.
Do you need an amount for your advertisement?
An amount.
Yeah, not to exceed, you can, you can reduce it.
Let's say not to exceed two million, and that way, if there's anything else we think we need to cover, we can, is that a way I come in from? Yeah.
You said from county general.
Yes. So that will be for workshop. In October. Okay.
And then, and then item number thirteen, that, this'll be the last time you see this on this spreadsheet, because we are now putting together a spreadsheet for ARPA funding expenditures and accounting, as well as help. So, so that you can see those all in one place, so number thirteen will go away from this sheet and you'll see it on another accounting sheet. Other than that, I think it's self-explanatory unless you folks have any questions.
Any questions on the projects?
We'll see if they got two million dollars in common.
Then, let me go to the, the ARPA spreadsheet, so we've made some significant changes to, uh, how we're proposing to report this to you. Should be the front page that's titled ARPA Funds Overview. If you look on the left-hand side there, ARPA receipts total twelve million, seven hundred ninety-seven thousand, one hundred ninety-five dollars. We appropriated, uh, ARPA funds for this year of two million, ninety-seven thousand, three hundred eighty-nine. We have help, uh, project commitments through our strategic investment plan that we just approved last month, earlier this month, of five million, eight hundred ninety-three thousand, two hundred fifty-three dollars. Which is the total commitment of seven million, nine hundred ninety thousand, six hundred forty-two dollars. So uncommitted ARPA funds then, uh, equal four million, eight hundred six thousand, five hundred fifty-three. If you look to the right of that, in the US Treasury reported use, we actually took ten million dollars, which was the maximum we could, as lost revenue. So we have ten million dollars of lost revenue, we have two million, seven hundred ninety-seven thousand, one hundred ninety-five dollars, under the restricted use that was the original, uh, uses allowed by, uh, the US Treasury when we received the ARPA funds. Of those categories, a hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred fourteen dollars has been appropriated under lost revenue, a million, nine hundred fifty-five thousand, eight hundred seventy-five dollars under restricted use. The help projects are all tentatively, uh, ascribed to lost revenue, which is five million, eight ninety-three, two fifty-three. Zero of the help projects, uh, is restricted use. That leaves a total commitment of the ten million in lost revenue of six million, thirty-four thousand, seven sixty-three, leaving three million, nine hundred sixty-five thousand, two thirty-three of lost revenue that's still available. And then on restricted use, we've committed one million, nine fifty-five, eight seventy-five, so there's eight hundred forty-one thousand, three hundred twenty dollars of the restricted, uh, ARPA funds still available. So if we go down the list then, uh, money that was appropriated for twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. Twenty twenty-two, there was, uh, money committed and appropriated for the sheriff, the purchase of radios, uh, for the sheriff's department, four hundred twenty-five thousand, eight hundred seventy-five dollars. That was appropriated and it was, it was paid, uh, so that's been used. Appropriation for twenty twenty-three, we had the community coordinator, which was a two-year commitment, uh, we committed a hundred twelve thousand, eight ninety. We appropriated one year of that, fifty-six thousand, four forty-five, we've spent thirty-six, nine oh six to date, there's an appropriation balance of nineteen, five thirty-nine. However, having said that, that next line is what you just appropriated tonight, the Oprah help grant for the community coordinator salary of twenty thousand dollars. So we will, that will put some money back into the unexpected expended funds for the community coordinator. We started out with an appropriation for grant administrator, and we're planning to give that a two-year trial under ARPA funds. We actually, uh, we posted that position, we got some applications, uh, we interviewed, we could not find anyone that we felt had the qualifications, the experience, uh, to do what we thought needed to be done. And so, we've talked to you in the past about, uh, using some of that money to contract with grant administrators or grant writers as things come up. You'll see in a minute on another page, uh, how we hope to, to handle that if we, if we have agreement on that. Uh, line twenty-three is the FICA perf, uh, health insurance LTD that goes along with the commitment to the community coordinator. Then the scanning project for the clerk, we, uh, committed one million, eighty thousand dollars, we appropriated six hundred thousand, uh, it's, we knew it was a two-year project going in. Two hundred ninety-five thousand has been paid to date, a balance of three oh four, seven seventy. Then you also appropriated for twenty twenty-three, two hundred and fifty thousand in capital equipment and two hundred thousand for sheriff's vehicles. None of that has been spent at this point, uh, it, it was left a little bit nebulous, so we wanna have that conversation over the next few weeks. Do you wanna use this money in twenty twenty-three, do you wanna pull this and, and, uh, apply it to the list of, of other ARPA, uh, projects that we'll be talking about here in a minute? So that's where we stand with twenty twenty-two and three appropriations. The next page is, uh, a restatement of the help project commitments that was approved a couple of weeks ago. This is just listing the Wayne County commitments, uh, my project and, and whether that's a, a county project, a joint Richmond or Wayne County project, or commitments to each of the, uh, the small town projects. And so those are all listed there, the grand total is five million, eight hundred ninety-three thousand, two hundred fifty-three dollars, that's been committed. And we anticipate that those will all be expenditures out of the, uh, the ten million dollars of lost revenue. And then finally, on the third page, uh, we have had conversations, uh, over the, over the years, actually, and things have bubbled to the surface, but nothing has been committed to. So what I did a couple of weeks ago is I put together a list, uh, we got some input from department heads, uh, we plan to get further input from other elected officials at our meeting with them, uh, quarterly meeting in October. We had conversations this morning between the commissioners, we actually added, uh, we added two line items and we increased, uh, one of those line items. So here's, here's what we have at this point, which is the currently updated. What I had sent to you was four million, eight hundred thousand initially, and after our conversations today, we added to that, so we're at six million, fifty thousand dollars of commitment. So, five hundred thousand for fuel tank replacement at the highway department, those are underground, uh, storage tanks that would be removed, and above-ground, uh, new tanks that would be added. Court staffing, this is trying to anticipate what, what you might choose to do, uh, in budgeting new positions. And so, as I calculated that, uh, I calculated three positions for the courts at roughly fifty thousand dollars apiece, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We added, or I think we added a hundred thousand dollar position, which is an attorney in prosecutor's office, and a fifty thousand dollar roughly position of a, a clerical support position. So that's a total of three hundred thousand per year, uh, and having heard the, uh, anticipation that we would, uh, pull back from that over time, until they were removed from ARPA. I put the whole thing in, three hundred thousand in twenty-four, and then half of that, a hundred and fifty thousand in twenty-five, gives the total of four hundred fifty thousand. Now again, that's, was just anticipation of what you might wanna do. This is definitely, uh, supporting the, the criminal justice program to help alleviate the backlog of cases, uh, because of COVID. Is definitely something that's doable with, uh, the restricted use ARPA dollars. If, if y'all, you know, you can either agree with that or disagree with that, this is to start conversation.
I will say at this point, we have moved them all onto the general fund.
Okay, so, so this would be one that, that we can eliminate if you choose to do it.
That's not been set in stone.
Yes, not set in stone, at this point, yeah.
Right.
Remember that, that's final until it's final.
And that's why I don't anticipate this being final for a month or two, uh, as, as you continue your budget process, but that's what that line item means. So there's kind of a, a terse little title here for the, for what that money represents, and I wanna try to explain that so that we're all on the same page. The next, uh, line item number three there, hardscape and landscape of the government complex, uh, there are several things that would be involved, including at least, uh, looking at the possibility of removing the brickwork. Which, uh, if you've been out there recently, it's buckling, it's cracking, there are holes, there are dips, there are, there are bulges. So that would remove that, replace it with, uh, some level of, of sidewalk, uh, but also then to, to, uh, renovate the entrance to the courthouse, which has some ADA, uh, compliance issues. Including then, uh, doing the landscaping that we've talked about. So we've tentatively penciled in five hundred thousand dollars for all of that work, we're starting to have LWC to look at, uh, what that might look like, and then getting us some estimates on how much it might cost. The next, number four there is new cabling for data and voice, it would be step one in the process of going to a new phone system, which would be a VoIP-based phone system. But it would require, uh, new cabling running to each of our workstations, uh, one cable for the data, or the, you know, the computer, another cable for the phone. And then from that point, the phones could be added, uh, individually by department, like we have five here, ten there, a hundred there, as we add departments off to that VoIP system. But having separate cabling will, uh, allow us greater speed and greater, uh, reliability to, to the system, and something that will have to be done eventually. We all know that, you know, on council for a while, we've probably talked about replacing the phone system for at least ten years, uh, and, and originally, the, the cost was gonna be two million dollars. Technology has changed substantially, IT has been able to keep, uh, keep that phone system limping along. You can't buy, uh, equipment from the manufacturer anymore, but they're able to buy it online from people that are eliminating their phone, old phone systems. So they've been able to keep that running and functional, this would be, uh, the first step in moving to a new phone system. Next one is a Wayne County Consortium for Grant Writer, uh, we've been talking to, uh, others in the community, the Wayne County Foundation, uh, the EDC, the, the Chamber, uh, Reed Health. Has the possibility of working collaboratively together to fund a contract with a grant writing company, and there are several of those. One that would have broad experience to be able to work with us on, uh, not just, just Oprah grants or EDA grants, but a wide spectrum, because they'll have multiple people on staff that have different levels of experience, uh, and, and, uh, different expertise. That's a placeholder, we haven't gotten down to brass tacks of exactly how much it would cost, but that two hundred thousand is, is roughly, uh, two years of commitment for the old grant writer position that we had originally approved, with the salary and the fringe benefits. And so, I penciled that in, and we'll be having those conversations over the next month or two. This would be a far, uh, more robust program than Wayne County just having one person to help write grants. And so, so we will, uh, we'll look at that and we'll keep you apprised of where we're at with those conversations. Next line item, roofs at the fairgrounds, in particular, uh, Coleman and the horse barn are, uh, have the original roofs that are in need of replacement. We're, uh, a placeholder, we don't have the bids yet, but we'll be ready to go to bid, Steve, of course laughed when I was gonna ask him a question, but I think we're gonna be ready to go to bid in the next thirty days, and it may be something that we're able to do, uh, yet this year.
So we can remove that from the project list, that's two hundred and seventy-four thousand.
It wouldn't have to be in both places.
Yeah, so we can remove that from there, okay.
So that is the same as, as what's on the project list that has not been, um, funded or approved yet. The, uh, security issues, you know, one of the things we've discussed is looking at, uh, instead of a, a key lock system, moving to use of the proximity cars to be able to, uh, essentially key the locks electronically. And, and we've penciled in two hundred fifty thousand dollars to do that, some of that will be dependent on the cost, on how many of the locks we, uh, we move to that system. Steve and I are actually meeting with, uh, representative from the security company to, uh, talk through that, and what they would recommend, and try to get some numbers, harder numbers of how much that would cost. The homeownership program is something we added to the, you know, this was it, this was it, a placeholder, uh, do you wanna, wanna talk Brad about your, uh, your idea on this one?
Yeah, we're just looking at, it's in the infancy stages of, of like a down payment assistance program, uh, through local lenders, um, to assist people buying homes or down. There's gonna be qualification, it's gonna be very similar to, um, like Indiana Health and Finance Authority's Down Payment Assistance Program. It's a grant, basically, it's gonna be forgiven, most likely be forgiven after so many years of staying in the home, if they sell it within, let's say five years, have to pay back appropriated portion of that, um.
We think it has some merit, there's, there are, uh, we need to encourage homeownership, uh, we also need to encourage home building, you know, adding to the, uh, the number of, of, uh, good quality, uh, homes that are available. Housing units, I'll call it, because that can include apartments, that can include rehab, that can include new builds. So we've penciled in five hundred thousand, again, continuing to look at that. The next line item is, I labeled it initially secure ambulance, I couldn't remember what, what the heck the sheriff had referred to and called that.
The bear cat.
Had that an, animal, but it's a bear cat, so three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, and you've heard the sheriff talk about that before, that's penciled into this. Animal control, uh, animal welfare, uh, originally we had two hundred and fifty thousand in there, uh, and after, uh, talking about that today, we bumped that up to five hundred thousand. You'll remember that as part of the help program, we are, uh, going to conduct a study, uh, with some experts in that field to tell us what are the needs, what can you do, what are the alternative, uh, scenarios that, that you might need to engage in to, to improve that situation. I still feel strongly that we shouldn't take any action until we have that study, we know what, uh, what's what, and, and this is an area that people are very passionate about, as most of you know. And so having a, a professional study done, uh, by people who are experts, I think, gives us, uh, more to, to work from than what we currently have, and that's, uh, in the works. Gateway Water Project, uh, is, is going to be a multimillion-dollar project at the industrial park, uh, we have talked a little bit about it, we're starting to get some additional information. I wanna say that, that phase one of that project is gonna be somewhere in the neighborhood of eight million dollars, uh, we've got a meeting in the next couple of weeks with, uh. We've got a meeting in the next couple of weeks with the engineers and some of the folks from Cambridge on that project, but we have not yet decided whether or at what level the county should participate in that for a number of reasons, but primarily from my perspective is that the county paid for that system completely when the industrial park was built and we still need to work through, you know, it should be paying for itself and do we need to put more money into this project or is that Cambridge's responsibility? And so we need to talk through that. So this is a placeholder if we do want to be involved in that project. Existing home renovation and the soccer sports complex are two additional things that we added today, this morning from our conversation. Existing home renovation, again, is in its infancy of conversation of do we want to provide some funding for property owners to improve that some of the, some of the properties that exist in Wayne County that need some investment if they're going to not be torn down in the future? There are a lot of architecturally significant houses, both in Richmond, but also in some of the smaller towns. Is it cost effective to try to save some of those, not only to create better housing units, but also to save some of that architecture which has interest for visitors, but also people, incentive for them to move to the community to live in a hundred and fifty year old home that has some history and some architectural significance? So again, a placeholder, we can talk about, is there a program that we could put together that would make sense and would be a useful investment with these one-time ARPA dollars? And then finally, the sports complex, and both of these, I would say, came up during the course of our public input phase of the help program, but because of the, some of the limitations on amount of funding, they didn't rise to a level where they were able to be funded by the help committee. And so this is another potential use of those remaining ARPA dollars. It would, it would need to come out of the, out of the ten million dollars of lost revenue, in my opinion, at this point, but we'll continue to do research as we refine this list. So that then moves this list with the addition of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars under the animal welfare and then the addition of those two projects at five hundred thousand apiece. It raises the number from four million eight hundred thousand to six million fifty thousand. We do anticipate getting input from other elected officials, other offices, and we did get input from department heads and those are included in this. We'd be happy if you want to take a few minutes and discuss whether you want to add anything to the list. The list can grow to whatever size we want it to grow to, but we still are at four million eight hundred thousand that is currently uncommitted of our twelve million seven hundred eighty thousand of ARPA funds. So that's where we're at right now. Be happy to answer any questions. There's, this is not in order of priority in any way, shape or form, it's trying to include the discussion that has existed over the last year or so and to try to capture some of those potential projects.
I think we probably, we need to think about it as far as council's concerned.
Absolutely. We've got time, we've got time.
Yeah, we have to do that.
And budget, budget is more urgent, I understand that, but I wanted to get it in front of you. I had several questions come back from, as I sent out the original list, what the heck is that? So I wanted to have a little more detailed explanation of what is on this list so that at some point we can come back to it, we can add to it, we can subtract from it, we can eventually get to that four million eight hundred thousand.
Jeff, can I add one thing to your list? You already know what I'm going to tell you, right?
I do, go ahead. Maybe somebody in the room doesn't.
I think we need to add a mental health slash drug abuse one-stop shopping hub, to use Judge Corn, Judge Todd's terminology. We've talked about that at the J-RAC meeting, which is, oh, help me out, Justice Reinvestment Advisory Group or Advisory Council.
And then the council.
And we need, we really need to find some help for some of these people that cannot get from here to there and there's just a lot of issues, but please add that to the list.
And add what number was it?
I'm sorry?
Add what number? Dollar and a half?
I need to pick a number?
Well, we need to.
Well, hey, I'll think big. We're going to give a million dollars to the Gateway Water Project, a million dollars. Just think big.
Okay, we'll add that.
And I have one quick question. I know we need to get to budget. Do you have any idea where the soccer sports complex?
Yeah, it's going to go where the, where the newspaper building currently is, we'll buy that term as soccer.
Great.
We don't.
Always the comedian, Jeffrey. I thought maybe.
Inject some humor into the conversation.
That's okay. I thought maybe, and I don't know if we could, the old Reed property that's sitting out there, that was mentioned to me by a few people, but I don't know by a mental.
Lots of places where it could go. We don't have any place particularly in mind. Yeah, and so you could kick the ball farther if you're kicking it downhill.
Little alley, yes.
Really want to win the coin toss so you don't have to go uphill? No, that's, there is a lot of flat ground in that, in that parcel, there's like sixty acres, I think. So that's a possibility. You know, the county still owns twenty-three or four acres out by the fairgrounds, you know, that's a possibility. There are empty fields just about everywhere, so.
Didn't know if anything was mentioned when you talked about that in particular, so.
No, no, not at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else before we go on to Tony and the budget? Questions or comments?
We've got a lot to think about.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for taking the time.
Sure.
You've got a lot of stuff you want to do, but here's another quick thing maybe that we can do before you get to that.
Okay.
The insurance premiums when we renewed in, for July one, have gone up and I would anticipate they'll continue to go up. There's been a lot of, you know, with storm activity increasing, those kinds of things, there's been a lot of increases on casualty insurance. So we need to get an additional estimated twenty-three thousand dollars from now to get us through the end of 2023. And we would like to request that you, you transfer money from, from the retirement or perf account. By my estimation, there's, there's between a hundred and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that would go unspent. It's been generated by all of the vacancies in several departments over the course of a year. That is typical and that's a fairly typical number. And we'd like to transfer twenty-three thousand dollars from that line item, which is account one three six six zero, to the insurance comprehensive business package, which is also in the commissioner's budget, account three three four six zero. And that should get us through the balance of 2023. We'll have to look at the budget again for 2024 and give you an estimate of what increase might be necessary. We've talked to the committee about we increased the deductible on our insurance policies to try to reduce some of the cost of premiums, but it also has a cost then when you have additional deductibles, so this is, this is the premium increase that's positive.
Does anybody have any questions about that?
Steve, you have a figure, Bobby, of the 24 budget?
Don't today, but I'll have one by your next meeting, maybe by tomorrow. I don't, I can't remember because we turned in the, you know, the budget request in June and we didn't renew the insurance until July and then it slipped my mind. But I would guess it would be in the fifty-ish thousand dollar range, but I'm not, we'll have to take a look at it to give you a better number.
Jeff, how much did you estimate that you thought you would have in surplus in retirement?
I think there'll be about a hundred and fifty thousand. Just based on what we've spent so far and what the balance is.
So you want to transfer that hundred and fifty?
I would just want to transfer twenty-three thousand, which will get us through 2023, that'll get us through.
I would make a motion that we transfer twenty-three thousand from thirteen six sixty to the general, to the business comp.
Thirty-three four six.
Business package, thirty-three four sixty.
Second.
Have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none, thank you.
Thank you very much. Now I'm done.
Now you're done. All right, Tony, take it away.
Okay.
Did you guys get that?
We need it written down.
Do you have the form to be signed by council for that, Jeff?
She has it.
I have, yes, and it just requires Beth's signature.
Thank you.
We have, the commissioners have a couple of additional claims. Do you want us to do that now or you want us to?
You can, if you want to, real quick.
Move for approval of payroll dated September 22nd. The Dunn Flex and Darnishman's date is September 22nd. Sheriff's retirement transfer voucher dated September 21st. The federal taxes transfer dated September 22nd.
Second. We have a motion in a second to approve those claims, it's going to be further discussion. If not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Thank you.
Will you pass those to Debbie York?
I have no idea whether we're done or not, but we're done for now.
You're done right now, so you're thinking something else.
Pass those down to Debbie.
Okay, taking a look at the budget, we requested that department heads and elected officials send me or their finance head emails regarding the 2024 budget and we need to go through these and make these changes in your books or on your computer. I will, will tell you what page, what it entails and what we need to, to do. The first one is on page sixty-nine. It is on the 4D. Line item ten nine forty-nine is in Fund.
It's paid out of the incentive fund.
It's paid out of the incentive fund four nine zero two.
It just needs to be, it got put in there by mistake, it needs to be removed.
We're going to go back to that, we were trying to get the stuff for the transfers you made, we were talking about that.
So you're in Department six sixty, 4D, and you're wanting me to take out the thirty-nine ninety-four, make it at zero?
Yes.
Yes.
On line item ten nine forty-nine. That got in there by mistake, it should not have been there.
It's, that person's in the, in the.
In the incentive.
In the incentive. Now, Fund eight eight nine five is in the red, that's the title, 4D incentive. A hundred and seventy-two thousand, roughly.
Yep.
And it's in the red because every year, council had sixty thousand in their budget and for the last four or five years, we never transferred it to the 4D fund. And that money just reverted back to the general fund when we didn't, we didn't do the transfer. Beth has got on her list in January that we will do that, that transfer, but in the meantime, we are going to transfer, we need to transfer from Fund eighty-eight ninety-five, Title 4D incentive, to Fund forty-nine oh two, 4D court, two hundred thousand dollars.
This is not 24 budget, you're talking about 23.
Right, we need to do it now.
And that'll finish the year.
Yes, it should. For a hundred and seventy-two, so bring it into the black, thirty-eight thousand and.
And we get sixty-six percent of what they spend for 4D court back, so we're hoping this will get us to the end of the year and then.
And then in January, we have in our budget, again, sixty thousand and we will transfer it in January. So I would make the motion that we transfer from Fund eighty-eight ninety-five, Title 4D incentive, to Fund forty-nine oh two, 4D court, two hundred thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
So, do you have an extra form, Debbie, that we could put that on for you?
We have the seventy-one oh two one. Can you have another one, Debbie? Because I think we might have a couple more things. A question, Tony, for this year, we still have the sixty thousand in the current budget for us, do we want to just leave it for this year and just move on? For the 4D court, yeah, for the 4D court.
For this year, this year.
For twenty-three, for twenty-three.
That's what I made.
There's a lot of items.
Can't they just be worth two hundred thousand?
They don't want to transfer it yet. So we should have transferred that, we've sent them all together.
Oh, yeah, because, Bobby, did you, did we make a claim for that sixty thousand dollars yet? For, for, did you do that for me yet?
For.
For 4D?
No.
Okay, we haven't done that yet, so.
For this year.
If we just go ahead and transfer that amount this year, we won't have to do the sixty out of our budget, but.
Right.
Right? It's just going to revert?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're okay.
And I've got on the council, page twenty-five, to take that to change to zero, was that hard to?
Talk about the council budget?
Yeah. Council budget, line thirty-three two oh two.
Oh, that's the sixty thousand, because we said from now on, we can take it from eighty-eight ninety-five.
Double checking, but yes, to make sure we can do that.
That's right.
In the future, we'll be able to take it from eighty-eight ninety-five.
So we take that sixty out?
Not till we find out one hundred percent sure.
Right.
Right, yeah, we got it, we're waiting for the prosecutor to tell us for sure that that's valid.
Yeah, did we want to do that two hundred thousand now or did we want to wait on that?
Which one?
On that two hundred thousand that we just did the transfer on?
I mean, we need to do it.
You actually might want.
You actually might want to wait. I mean, we've done the motion and that, just don't give that to them. We're to hear back from Mike. Yeah.
That's right.
This week, yes. And then we'll just kind of.
I don't know what you do. I would move that we, the last transfer that we did, that we ignore at this point.
Okay.
We not do the transfer.
And really, the question about that is because we want to make sure that catching that backup is legitimate with the eighty-eight ninety-five, which is the four D incentive. So Mike's gonna check with the state. I talked to them about the sixty every year is fine, but not catching up the lumps. So we're, we're just make sure that's okay, so.
We're probably gonna do this, but we need to make sure the courts are comfortable with it.
So we'll avoid that last transfer.
So you have a motion on the fourth.
Motion to avoid the last transfer, yes.
Second.
Thank you.
And all in favor?
Aye.
We have to make sure everybody's on the same page.
We do.
The prosecutor and the clerk are the ones that can use that fund. The clerk has indicated that she doesn't need to use any money out of there. We need to make you know, we could have her request hers to do this, her share of the money, but Mike wanted to do some checking with the courts.
We have to make sure we do it the ethically way and make sure that we're doing the right thing.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, the next one, if you turn to page sixty-nine, and sixty-nine is in the four D. Line item ten nine four nine.
That's what we just did, man.
I did that on two.
Yeah, it is. It's okay. We just did it twice.
Yeah. And then we needed to make sure that in the prosecutor for the incentive eighty-eight ninety-five.
Debbie, you see, that's always been zero, all the way across there. Like, that forty-seven nine ninety-three shouldn't be there either, because that accidentally got put in when those spreadsheets were created at the beginning of budget time, and it should not even be there.
At this point, I can't remove that one because we published, but this column is the adopted one.
Oh, but it will go to zero. Okay, gotcha. That's fine. I just want to make sure. See, it's always been zero.
The, all we're concerned with right now is just the adopted one.
Okay.
Okay, Max. Fund eighty-eight ninety-five.
For my budget. Oh.
Line item ten nine forty-nine is there in the twenty-twenty-four budget, thirty-nine thousand eight nine four.
We just said, oh, don't you take that out to zero.
Yeah, we did.
Yes, it was.
We just did it.
Okay. I've, I've had two different requests, so.
Okay.
That one's rusty as getting.
We could take it out twice, we wouldn't help it.
Okay. And thus, I'll read comments that came, whether they wanted to change or not.
Who is this?
Judge Dolaheating said on his budget, let us know that he will make his budget work. Has some concerns in appeals and jury for DMs being cut. But he knows that we've always funded it if he needs it, and so he's fine with it.
Yeah.
Right. Anything that comes up short, we cover it, and just based upon what they've spent, I think, you know, we're gonna be close, but. The next one is in the counsel budget. Here again. Page twenty-four. We need a we need a line item. Actually, the line item, I'll tell you, is gonna be thirty-three nine five five in that budget.
So we're adding a new one?
We're adding a new one.
What was the number again?
Thirty-three nine five five.
That's those two that we added before, the capital cases.
And in the title.
Thirty-three nine five five.
Yes.
And the name of it?
Prosecutors supplemental. That will be one that we kind of see how it goes throughout the year, and find transfers for it or use rainy day. There should be a, a line item thirty-three, same budget, right underneath it, thirty-three nine fifty-six. And it will be court services supplemental. Here again, no budget amount. We'll see how that goes and determine next year how we want to, to fund that.
We created these at our meeting two weeks ago. I think we've already given you the paperwork and done all that. Yeah. We just didn't have it on here.
It was mentioned, but I wasn't giving the paperwork, so it was not that.
Well, I mean, it was done in the classroom as far as in law and so forth. You just didn't have it on this.
I think these new forms that are being created that we're gonna have to use, the supply of those needs to be provided to us. We have them at each meeting, so as we do this work, if they're gonna require a form.
Do you have access to the internet? They're on the internet.
No.
No.
Okay, yeah, how many do you want? I can print.
If you make one copy, give us one copy of each. We can make copies, but at least then we'll have them.
Okay, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item involves two funds. In Fund one one eight one, which is the platter room maintenance fund.
It's on the general platter room. This is, Mark, this is what we were talking about a while ago.
So line item ten seven oh one. Budget amount will be thirty thousand dollars, even.
Thirty here?
Thirty thousand.
Instead of the seventeen oh two seven.
Her pay is forty thousand.
We know. We're gonna tell you where to put the rest of it.
Okay, so thirty thousand there.
We can tell you all at once, but.
Your platter room fund doesn't generate enough to pay that salary, the full salary for five years, so we're putting the thirty thousand of it in there, and then we'll just put the ten thousand two ninety-nine back in your budget.
So.
For the platter room girl, because there's not gonna be enough in that platter room fund.
So we need to go back to the other.
And then we're gonna go back to the general fund, auditor's budget, page one.
And then we're just funding his grant person.
Is everybody, is everybody there?
But then we're just funding his grant person in his budget, right? Or we're just taking more of the platter room salary out of, out of here.
Right.
What line is?
Ten seven oh one.
We're just taking a larger, we're paying thirty thousand out of the platter room instead of the whole thing. We're just paying thirty thousand of her salary, and then we're taking ten thousand two ninety-nine we're gonna add into the general fund, and we'll fund that in your budget.
So how much are you putting back in the one oh seven oh one?
Ten thousand two hundred ninety-nine. The two of those combined, forty thousand two ninety-nine is the salary.
And then we're just gonna fully fund in his budget the grant clerk, because there was a. Right, I thought that was. Yes, yes, okay. But do we have a line item for that grant person in there yet?
Yes.
They're big there, you have it?
Yeah, yeah.
Is there a number assigned to that? Because in our book, the number's.
Yes, one oh seven oh nine. In order for me to publish, I had to create the line items.
Okay.
One oh seven oh nine?
Yes.
And that's thirty-five three forty, right? Send that again, about how much? Thirty-five three forty was the salary?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
And then from Lonnie, Flintalk, just has a message for us. Bless our hearts for having to deal with budget issues. If I can be of any help in any of the confusion, the incentive funds, and the world of child support, please let me know. So, nice email there. Okay, now, in the health fund, Fund eleven fifty-nine. Line thirty-three six twenty, which is ten thousand five hundred, will go to zero.
So what line will we put her telephone under? We need to decide.
We need a telephone.
I think it says communication cellphone and something. I don't remember the number, but.
That she already had, isn't it?
I believe so. I think it was in there as zero.
There's a communication line thirty-three two forty. It's communication dash telephone dash.
Yes.
What line item was it again?
Thirty-three two forty.
And we're just putting ten thousand.
Oh, it's already in there.
Needs to have.
Money. We're gonna put money in.
Ten thousand.
Right, but I'm saying there already is a line item there.
I know, that's what we're saying. We see it, we just didn't know what the number was, but yeah.
I thought we had to create one.
No.
Okay.
Okay. And did you do thirty-three four sixty-one?
That's the next one up.
Oh, sorry.
That's fine. Line item thirty-three four sixty-one. Christine looked at Dr. Jettmore's twenty-twenty-three liability insurance and her general liability insurance, and that number is ten seven ninety-five, is that right?
That's what it is now.
It needs to be fourteen thousand five hundred. Okay.
On the next page, on that last page of hers, number of forty-four five hundred, those two vehicles that she's got in there, are those, do they still need to be there, or are those getting moved to that new budget we passed to Mike? Because I had a question mark there, and I had them highlighted.
We took that out.
Did we?
It was zero.
Oh, it is zero, okay, okay.
I think she intends to pay for that out of the reimbursement.
Okay. All right.
Now, in your books, if you will turn to page fifty-one.
On the regular.
The general fund budget. And that would be public defender. Line item one one three five four. We had changed twenty-four thousand. That needs to be thirty-two thousand. I know they haven't spent that, but that's.
She says they're going to.
She said thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
They have, they have hired someone.
Pardon?
They have hired someone.
Yeah, okay, and that's changing a number of these items in the same budget.
Tony, can we just triple check and look at ten eight oh three and make sure that we have? That's right, thirty-eight two thirty-one. I just looked at it. Yeah, that's right. Just to make sure.
Which one?
There we go, okay, thank you.
What line is it, ten?
Eight oh three.
I got thirty-eight.
Yeah.
That's correct. Line item two two one one zero. She had requested thirty-eight thousand initially.
Hundred.
Thirty-eight hundred, thank you. She says she needs forty-two hundred. Yeah.
We cut back to these back, now she's put them.
Thirty-three two thirty. We had cut to a thousand. She's requested that go back to fifteen hundred, or go to fifteen hundred. Initially, it was twenty-five hundred. Line item thirty-three two fifty. She originally asked for sixteen hundred. We put zero. She's asked for that to go to a thousand.
There's no history of anything spent, but whatever.
So because they requested, are we putting it back when there's a history of not being spent? Then we're gonna cut this from somewhere else?
Not everyone. Well, she had a reason.
We got one that we're probably not gonna change.
What's her reason for that?
Yeah, we got explanations for all of these.
Well, she's got six attorneys now, is her in this department, budget. Thirty-three eight ten, originally was twelve hundred fifty. We cut it back to a thousand. She says it needs to be twelve fifty. And finally, thirty-three eight ninety. It was thirty-five hundred in it. We reduced it to a thousand. She wanted us to leave it as is. We think it, we think it ought to stay, uh, leave it as is in her original thirty-five hundred. We're gonna leave it as a thousand. She needs to do transfers.
She's, well, she has other places she could get money from. Yeah, they have the supplemental public defenders fund that maybe they could use for some of these. They need additional.
Because we made so many changes, can I match with Max?
Yep. Aye.
I came up with eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand two fourteen.
Barry, have you been making the changes on the computer?
No, I've got it in my book.
Max had to get his charger. What do you have? Eight twenty-eight?
Eight twenty-eight two fourteen.
I'll ask him when he comes back.
From Diane Williams on the twenty-twenty-four supplemental public defender. That budget appears fine to her. We'll go ahead, because there's no changes there. I think we need, I think we need a little break for station identification here as Max goes to get his charger. I will tell you that the next one is on page four, or the county treasure. And I'm gonna wait until Max gets back here. We waited on yet, Max. We wanna check the totals on that last one. Your total versus what the honors Debbie has. Your total versus what the Honors Debbie has.
And that, back in that, was a Public Defender?
Yeah, eight twenty-eight two fourteen.
Yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
Okay. The next one. Will be in the Treasure on page four. Uh, line item thirty-three eight ten dues and subscriptions. I'm sorry, it's line item thirty-three six seventy, just above that. Thirty-three six seventy, she originally requested a thousand, we dropped it down to five hundred based upon expenditures. But she has a new copier with maintenance contract and the copies will run a little more. So we had, our last change was five hundred, that needs to go to seven hundred. Okay, um, Kathy and I, was there any who else? We met with the Prosecutor.
You and I and the Prosecutor, Ron Cross, Mark and Debbie York, the Prosecutor's Chief Deputy or Office Manager, Sherry Crick. And I think Melanie Vaughn came over from the Court's Office.
Okay. And in, we have been paying, um. Two employees. From that fund. We need to stop, um, paying them and move it into the General Fund. That fund would, would, it, it's in the red, it's the Prosecutor's Incentive.
It's, it's seventy-one oh two infraction deferral program. And if you don't mind, I'll jump in here and give a little. So what has happened over the years, not just this year, but over several years. Money has gone into this fund for the Prosecutors that was receipted incorrectly by the description. So we found that, we're fixing it, and we are currently paying part of two employees out of seventy-one oh two. And there won't be enough money to fund that going forward. So, we need to get.
The Hagerstown, the Hagerstown Town Court was not coding it correctly. And they were putting it in another fund. And so it looked like it was in the right fund. What we did is transfer the money that came in in twenty twenty-three out of it to the, to the appropriate fund. These two employees, we cannot continue to, to pay, we're in the red a little bit. Uh, we need to move those two employees out of there and put them in the General Fund. And this needs done this year, for twenty twenty-three, and then we'll talk about twenty twenty-four. So, um, it, it's, it's a supplement of their fund.
Right.
And so, um. What fund do we need to put those two employees in?
They go into the Regular Prosecutor's Fund, they have payroll numbers in that fund.
Are you saying the Prosecutor's Budget?
I'm sorry, yes, Prosecutor's Budget, yes.
So we need to have two line items there.
Well, I have them somewhere.
We need to know the two employees. We, we're paying about four hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Four forty-eight oh two.
Per pay.
Per, per pay, something like that.
In that, um, infraction deferral, that's, and what that is, is if you get a traffic ticket. And you wanna pay a fee so that it doesn't go on your, your license. And if you stay clean for six months and not, not get a ticket, um, then the ticket goes away. This is the fund that we're talking about.
You seem to know a lot about that fund.
Well.
How do you know so much?
I, I kind of defer to Max and you and. A former counsel person, as the true experts on it. But, um, you only can do it once.
We weren't paying a hundred percent of those salaries.
We were paying four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and something of their salaries out of this each pay.
And the rest is out of the General Fund.
Cause out of the General Fund, but it's, it's which two employees, which two employees, do you know?
Yeah, which two are they?
Well, let me see if I can.
So we just need to increase the amount of money.
Probably the two that have the lowest salary.
Here I have it. So, it's. I just have the name, last name, first and last name. It's four forty-eight oh two per pay. Hop, hop, am I allowed to say this? Hopkins in short of the two employees?
No, you're not allowed to say it.
Okay, and I'll take it back, sorry.
There's, oh, you got ten. Nine hundred is one of the line items out of, um, the seven lines, zero two.
I didn't actually have that part.
That's what the salary.
She didn't give me that, she just gave me that.
What's it say? So.
Number?
Okay, so let's just do the first one. The first one, line item is one zero two three eight. That's gonna be the Deputy Prosecuting Attorney.
Oh.
Okay.
And that total compensation according to the salary ordinance is five thousand dollars.
That was in seventy-one oh two.
Wait, wait, hold, let me back up. That's a total compensa, well, it says total compensation from the fund.
Oh, that was the five thousand that was coming from the.
Okay, so five thousand. Okay, then the second one is ten nine hundred, Secretary Superior Court three. That would be the six, I have down six thousand, six forty-eight seventy-two in the salary ordinance.
I'm sorry, Kim, sixty.
Six thousand, six thousand six hundred forty-eight point seven two.
Seven two, okay. And then those two need to then be moved into.
Whoa.
That amount.
We're confused down here, which is.
So you're saying in this one oh, which is up there, one oh two three?
Not, not up here, we're talking about twenty-three for the moment. We switch back to twenty twenty-three, current, current budget.
Okay.
So right now, these two employees need to be moved out of seventy-one oh two. And I have the little form I can give to you. So then we need to move them into the General Fund for those same.
The Prosecutor General.
One's in the Prosecutor and one's in Superior Three.
I'm sorry?
One's in the Prosecutor and one's in Superior Three.
I wondered about that.
According to Kim.
Oh, I thought they were both, I thought I was told they were both in Prosecutor's.
No, she just told us, one's in Superior Three. What's the Superior Three number, Kim?
Well, and I think that. That Superior Three number is a Prosecutor's employee who's assigned to that court.
Oh, so what budget's in?
That's assigned, they assign them to courts.
Is it in the Prosecutor's Budget? Cause I didn't see that line item.
Well, I have, it's Prosecutor Infraction Deferral Fund, and it, it has two positions in it that's being paid out of it.
And I think now that you say that, I think that's right. What you're saying about.
Yeah, she's assigned to the court, but she's the Prosecutor's employee.
But that number is, I don't see that number in our budget. For that second one.
For the second, let me see.
Might be easier to see.
So we're looking right here.
Mm-hmm.
The one for, that's assigned to Superior Court Three is one zero nine zero zero.
We don't have that in there.
It's not in Prosecutor's Budget.
Uh-uh, and it's not in Superior Three either.
It's not, that number, that number is not in the Prosecutor's Budget.
Do you have names on your sheet? Do you wanna go on?
Here, I'll.
Oh, where's it?
Please just.
Kathy, yes, careful.
Right here.
This one's kind of a clunky one, but we're trying to fix it.
Oh, yes, it's both of those, okay, those were the two.
Clunky game in nineteen fifties, Charlie.
But I wonder why we don't have that number.
Kathy, what, what do you have that, do you agree?
Yes, with those two.
Yeah, those are the two.
But one of our nine hundreds not in here, in our budget.
Those were the names that I got from the payroll clerk.
The names are fine, but I mean, I'm just saying, it's not up.
There is no line item number of that.
This is.
What's the title of the job?
Okay, so of the employee, the Secretary is Secretary Superior Court Three. She's definitely in the Prosecutor's Office.
And we have that as one oh eight seventy in here. In our.
So maybe it's a different number in the Prosecutor's Office than it is in the, in Fund seventy-one oh two?
Well, there's no budgets up there.
Is it, is it? Forty-nine six seven one? Or forty-four three twenty-five?
Any set, I just see both of these out of seventy-one oh two, that's where I got it.
Yes.
Yeah, but it, but it's just having the line in the Prosecutor's to move it to. But this is the twenty-four budget, I wonder if it, if it got missed somehow.
Okay, yeah, is that right there?
So, so we're talking about the twenty-three budget, is it possible that whichever one you said you don't find is not on the twenty-four?
This is the twenty twenty-three salary ordinance.
Oh, I thought you were looking at what was up there, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, the numbers don't jive.
But as far as we know, the same numbers carried over in line items carried over into twenty-four.
I would have thought so.
Secretary Superior Court Three says one oh nine hundred, and in here it's one oh eight seventy. Did someone?
That's true.
Line item in, in the other, in the other fund.
Yeah, ten eight seventy is Secretary.
So right here it is.
Okay.
So you're gonna be looking at.
There we go.
One zero eight seven zero, yes, Secretary Superior Court Three.
That's here.
So, um. The adopted amount in twenty-three was forty-nine, and then they, six twenty-one. And then they requested forty-four three twenty-five, is that because of the five thousand dollars that comes from? That did come from that other fund?
Probably, would be my guess.
Five thousand less.
Well, it's not quite.
Not quite, it's not exactly five thousand less, I don't know what.
So what do we need to end up with on that?
So it's.
We, what we need to do is do a transfer from counsel contingency. To these two line items to pay the, to, to pay the portion that was being paid out of the Prosecutor Incentive Fund. For the rest of the year.
You got an amount for that?
I do not.
Can we get the numbers together?
Four forty-eight oh two per pay for those two people.
For each one?
Together, total.
One of them's five thousand, one of them's six thousand, right?
Run the line.
Yeah. I just have the per pay amount.
Can we get, can we work on that and just make that change at our next meeting and personnel?
And I'll get with you, Kathy, and make sure we have the same.
To get the right numbers.
We gotta get the numbers.
Get the right numbers and the right amounts.
Can do the transfer, but can we, on the next, when's the next payroll?
Friday.
Uh, Friday, right? Yeah.
Yeah, so we're not gonna build it to the, we're gonna, we can do retroactively, I guess.
Okay, but they need to pay it out of the Prosecutor and run it in the red until we do that transfer. In the October.
But let, but let's check because it may be too far gone if, if payroll's Friday. To pay that out of the Prosecutor rather than out of seventy-one oh two? Or did I not understand you right? Leave it, I would run it in seventy-one oh two in the red, then we'll fix it. And, and we wanna move those for the rest of the year into the General Fund, we get the right numbers. And then we'll fix the whole thing.
Friday's pay would not need to be changed, but then.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
So we'll leave it in seventy-one oh two for the time being, we'll get the correct numbers.
And we will have corrected it.
And we'll make that all correct.
We will have corrected that before the next payer, payroll comes out. You'll just need to make sure you do it out of the entire amount of the person's salary. Out of the Prosecutor and the Superior Court Three. Um, budgets and none out of the supplemental.
So ki, can we do this? Can we at least go ahead and vote to move those two employees? Into the Prosecutor's Fund and we get the correct dollar amount and so forth later? Only because I'm not sure between now and when is the next payroll after Friday?
Do we?
So, do we meet again before that next payroll?
We meet on Wednesday morning before that.
How many, how many papers, how many papers, we have lots in here.
She has to submit it beforehand.
There's usually two a month, for some months we have three.
I would make the motion that those two employees no longer be paid on the Prosecutor's Sub, Supplemental Infraction Fund. And their full salaries be paid out of the Prosecutor's, um, uh, General Fund. And that, um, Kim will bring us the amounts that we need to transfer.
Well, it, yes, it'll have to come between that department and the Auditor's Office. The way I kinda see it, and I will double check, it will not take a salary ordinance amendment. Because on the salary ordinance, we have their total compensation. So this is just probably gonna be between, cause I don't do the transfers. It will be, I'll, I can help the proc, I can help Sherry, and we can, but we'll get that done. But we won't need a salary ordinance amendment, we just need to fix that all our amount.
So that Sherry needs to make the transfer request.
Sherry does, and then we may have to do something in Kronos, but nothing with the salary ordinance.
Well, if we're taking out a counsel contingency to fund it.
Then we should do it.
Then it's.
Yeah, then it should be.
That, that would need to do that.
Okay.
So if we go ahead and leave it that this payroll will stay in seventy-one oh two.
Has to.
Then we will put, I'll just say four hundred and fifty dollars back into seventy-one oh two out of counsel contingency. Then after this week, those two people will be paid out of the Public Defenders County General Fund. For twenty twenty-three, and then also in twenty twenty-four, we wanna totally move those two.
Yeah, let's, let's talk about twenty twenty-four until everybody's clear on it, but on.
So right now, we're just doing. From counsel contingency, four hundred and fifty dollars to.
To.
No.
Those two line items?
We're gonna do from counsel contingency, whether it's tonight, I mean, we could probably do it tonight and then, and then figure. But we need to pay the, we need to add to the Prosecutor's General Fund line item. The amount that is going to need to, to be paid for those two employees and the Superior Court Three.
We have two separate things here, cause then the four hundred and fifty is to make this payroll, right?
Yeah, that's, that's separate, that's separate.
Yes, yes.
Um, so we need to know how much it's beginning two weeks from Friday through the end of the year. How much do we need to transfer into the General Fund Prosecutor line item and Superior Three, uh, line item? To pay those two employees for that total of four hundred forty-eight and some change for the rest of the year. And do you wanna wait and do that as a, um. A transfer in October, that?
Um, it doesn't matter, I don't think.
Go ahead and pass the, it will be calculated and.
We can do the four hundred and fifty.
Pardon?
We can do the four hundred and fifty dollars now.
Well, one issue at a time, on paying them enough, um, to take it out of infraction deferral.
Oh, yeah.
Into the Prosecutor, do you wanna do that in October?
I think we should do it at Personnel at our next meeting, so we have it all.
It'd be finance, probably finance.
Finance, if you can, you can get the figures and put that on the agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll work with Bobby, work with Kathy, but it needs to be finance.
Okay.
And then, is the four fifty enough?
It, it should be enough for this, this payroll, yes, and I got that from the payroll clerk for those two. So, if we move that, then as they get the correct amounts in, that will put that fund back there.
Okay, so we can do it, we can do a transfer from counsel contingency. To Fund seventy-one oh two.
Yes.
Four hundred and fifty dollars, and I would make that motion.
And I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
New post, there are none?
Debbie, are you clear on that?
I'm making a paper.
I'm gonna, I got my handy dandy forms, so.
Oh, I have it right here.
Oh, you got it, okay, we got it, we're good.
Now, additionally, in the twenty-twenty-four budget, those two employees, we need to put their full salaries in the twenty-twenty-four budget. So in the prosecutor, what line item is that person?
For the secretary?
Is that ten eight seventy?
That's the secretary.
It is, yes.
Okay, and so in the twenty-twenty-four budget, what is the total, that's both funds?
Should be like forty-nine.
Well, we have the total, we have the total compensation line in the salary ordinance, and that's, that number for this year is, oh boy, here we go, can't see. Forty-four thousand, three twenty-four eighty.
That's what we had in here last week.
That's the total compensation.
That's what we had before, and then.
That's the number that was in there two weeks ago.
That's in their budget, not counting the five thousand they get from the other budget.
Does that year forty?
No, it's, it's, it's forty-four three twenty-four eighty.
But that's before we add what was paying them out of seventy-one oh two, no?
No.
No, it says that's total.
This wouldn't have anything to do with appropriation, this is what you're paying that person.
No matter where it comes from.
No matter where it comes from.
Yeah.
But that's the amount that, that they have in their budget, not counting the other five thousand.
Well, that's the amount, we changed, we changed that to that number last time. It wasn't that original.
So this is what we were paying her, but this is her total compensation. When I look back at the prosecutor, it's the same thing, we did a total and compensation.
It won't matter until, if, unless you get what the salary ordinance is for that person, all in the prosecutor's bu- budget. So it, it's not gonna be split anymore.
Okay.
But if you have the, the salary ordinance, it's not an appropriation, it's what we have to pay, the appropriation comes out of that budget, and that now has to meet what she pays.
So what we already have in there is?
So how did we get up to forty-four three twenty-five?
Because she said, her salary says forty-four three twenty-four eighty, right?
Right.
Yes.
And that's what needs to be in there.
But I thought, I thought there were two figures.
So what's in your print originally?
Forty-four three twenty-five?
Uh huh.
I got it in red, like we changed.
Well, what we changed was the twenty-three figure, because the twenty-three figure, they had the forty-nine six twenty-one.
Cause they had asked for more. They had put their raises in there, and we put them all back.
Yeah.
Okay, let's go to Superior Court Three, page forty-five.
Well, I thought there were two positions.
Yeah.
The other one's in.
It's in Superior Court Three.
This is Superior Court Three in the prosecutor.
This, this ten eight seventy is the secretary.
It's a Superior Court.
It's not a Superior Court Three employee, it's a prosecutor's employee who happens to be.
Assigned to that court, that person refers to the prosecutor.
Okay, so we're in the, we stay in the prosecutors. What line item is the other employee?
I gotta go back to it, sorry.
The other one?
One oh two three eight.
There, there were two of them again, to remind you, so the other one is
One, two, three.
A deputy prosecuting attorney with ten two three eight.
Say the number again.
Ten two three eight.
Ten two three eight, deputy prosecuting attorney, that was the five thousand Kathy talked about.
Is the salary for that person ninety-four oh four three combined?
Let's see, give me a second here. Just can't open these, couple of your glasses.
Can't see.
Thank you, got it.
That's what they were paying in the red.
Okay, sorry for the delay, that number out of the prosecutor, out of the general fund is going to be ten two three eight, it's a prosecuting attorney, and the, the total compensation is ninety-nine thousand forty-three dollars.
And that's what needs to be
That's what we already got.
In the budget.
Oh, okay.
That's five thousand.
So this, this. Well, if that's, yeah, it does, so seventy-one oh two, this is the twenty line item.
So ten, in here again, in the prosecutor's budget.
So it's sixty-one.
Line item ten two thirty-eight.
Right there, and then you got the four fifty, so we'll just stick it all up.
Ninety-four oh four three should be ninety-nine oh four three.
Ninety-nine?
Yeah.
So, why, why is this person different and the other ones not?
Why you got five thousand different serial numbers?
I don't know, I think, I can't answer that, cause I wasn't the author of this part when it happened, I think this is, this is gonna be the prosecuting attorney that dealt with the Hagerstown court possibly, but I, I don't know the ins and outs of it, cause that was last year's salary ordinance, I wasn't too involved with it, so I can't answer that.
No question.
What's the prosecutor attorney, the secretary?
Out of the deferral, one is an attorney, I think working in Hagerstown, the other one is a, is a clerical position.
So that has been changed to ninety-nine oh four three up there. So left on this one will be the transfers from county, uh, or from council contingency, an amount to those two line items in the prosecutor's budget that will pay for the employee from two weeks from Friday through the end of the year. And we've made the changes that we needed to in the twenty-twenty-four budget.
Okay.
Now, we'll go back, possibly to Clunky, um, cause these all haven't been, uh, discussed. This email is, is from Debbie, it is on the non-county general funds, um, she's verifying the spreadsheet requested amounts, what the requested amounts she has in law, she wanted to make sure they match before she uploads to Gateway for publishing. In doing so, she found a couple issues she wanted to explain, Fund eleven fifty-nine Health Department.
We're back to the health department.
Back to the Health Department.
Eleven fifty-nine Debbie, please.
Um, line item twenty-two five hundred, is that in there twice?
Yeah.
Line item twenty-two five hundred.
See, twenty-two five hundred, they originally put it in twice, so I put it to zero, which made it change.
She contacted Christine, and she confirmed she accidentally duplicated that line item in her budget, therefore, she has taken it out, which changes the twenty-twenty-four adopted total budget amount to seven hundred and fifty-two thousand four sixty-six. And the twenty-twenty-four requested budget amount to seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand seven twenty-five, um, is that what you have Max?
No, I, that's, we're talking about either non-general fund.
Right.
Health Department.
The Health Department.
I got eight oh one nine thirty, and we already, only had the one line.
We're still in health?
But we made some other changes to this tonight.
Yes.
So what's, what's the total that you have now?
For the, what I will call the adopted, that we'll do is thirteen seven twenty-eight one ten.
What?
The total adopted amount?
You're, you're talking, are you talking the summary, or are you talking the health?
Just for health.
Okay, now let me get back to the health. I have seven fifty-five six seventy-one.
I got eight oh one nine thirty.
We added that ten thousand.
Take out ten and then put ten in.
Added ten thousand, therefore, the, um, thirty thousands is one oh five eight two eight.
We added ten thousand, I got that in here.
And fourteen five on the insurance.
Yeah, I got that in here.
And then we took out fourteen thousand, and then we put.
What was twenty-five?
That's thirty-three, yeah, that's not.
Did he have seven fifty-five six seventy-one then?
Nope, I got eight oh one, unless it's not adding some money.
The, um.
What do you got on, up on the personnel total?
Personnel's five eighty-two eight forty-three.
Five ninety-three forty-three.
Five eighty-two eight forty-three.
Five ninety-three forty-three.
Did you take out the ten thousand five hundred off of that equipment line?
Yes.
Yeah, you told him on personnel.
On personnel, you still have, you have that.
I don't understand how we couldn't match, cause we didn't change any personnel.
Five ninety-three forty-three.
That's what I was hoping to do, let me read it from the top. Um, thirty-nine eight ninety-four on ten two thirty, ten three five five is seventy-five eight ninety-eight.
Yes.
Ten five eleven is fifty-seven oh five five, ten five twenty seventy-one three forty-six, ten five sixty fifty-six one forty, ten five seventy fifty-six one forty, ten five eighty fifty-six one forty, ten five ninety fifty-six one forty, ten nineteen thirty-nine eight ninety-five, ten nine twenty thirty-nine eight ninety-five, thirteen oh five zero sixty-eight hundred, thirteen four eighty twenty-five thousand, thirteen six forty twenty-five hundred.
Wait a minute.
We have ten thousand on that.
We've got ten thousand there.
Okay.
An overtime.
Okay, so now I have five ninety-three forty-three.
Five ninety-three forty-three.
Forty-three for the total of personnel?
Five ninety-three forty-three.
For personnel, yeah.
I can understand.
And your total?
The grand total, seven sixty-three one seventy-one.
I still got eight oh one.
All right, let me, let me make sure my formula is, I mean, it should be.
What, what did she have on that?
What's your total for, what's your total for the two, uh, twenty thousand of them?
Sixty-seven thousand?
I got ninety-one.
Okay, twenty-two one ten, no, twenty-two one twenty-three thousand, twenty-two one thirty.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, twenty-two what?
One twenty is thirty, or three thousand, twenty-two one thirty.
Wait a minute, I got twenty-two one ten, I got five thousand.
We have nothing.
Do you have five thousand on that one?
Why don't we have anything?
I do.
That was the original.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, okay.
Yeah.
Is that what's on there?
Were there two of those, twenty-two one twenty?
There were two, yeah, there were two of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I got five thousand on one, and the other one I got zero.
Yeah, zero's there, so a total of seventy-two thousand?
Ninety-one thousand, so go on down, printed office supplies.
Three thousand?
Yes.
Twenty-two one thirty fifty thousand, twenty-two one fifty one thousand, twenty-two two ten twelve thousand.
I got twenty.
You have twenty on that, gas, fuel, and lubricants.
That was one.
Don't, hmm.
That's the same number they had in twenty-three.
Uh huh.
Okay, and then twenty-two five hundred is a thousand, twenty-two five hundred.
Wait a minute.
Yeah.
Twenty-two four seventy.
And zero.
I got a thousand.
I don't understand this, um, cause we matched the last time, so now I have eighty-one thousand?
I got ninety-one.
So I have twenty-two four seventy, I have a thousand, I have twenty-two five hundred, a thousand.
Yes.
And I'm showing eighty-one thousand.
Ninety-one, you're looking at the next, you're looking at column over, and she's.
Right here.
One pretty budget ninety-one thousand, very quick.
And she's, she's doing this one.
Requested.
Yeah, I'm not doing any requested, I'm in the adopted column.
Any numbers in that column, you're talking about column G.
Yeah, that, that's what we've always been verifying.
There's been numbers on this one for column G.
I forwarded them to you.
This is what was sent to us.
Which time, I've sent you a couple times.
So we're off twenty thousand.
Off ten thousand.
Ten thousand.
Back up, twenty-two one ten is five thousand.
Twenty-two one twenty is three thousand, twenty-two one thirty is fifty thousand.
Wait a minute, I got sixty here.
That's mine.
That's not what's adopted.
So you wanna change that?
But there is no numbers, there was never any numbers sent to us on the adopted column.
I've sent to you as I have updated them, and that's, I've been working on that column.
Yeah, my question would be, did anybody write their numbers down?
I don't have those things, things she does.
I wrote it down, I can get the truck, sure, I can go get it.
I don't, I don't know if I wrote those down or not, I can't say, I mean, I'm, I did some, but I'm not sure if I did every time.
I did not, yeah. Well, I'm afraid of, is her numbers were right.
Yeah.
And she changed it back, just now.
And you never had anything in.
There was never any numbers in that column.
Yeah.
This is the one that Debbie sent on the eighteenth, non-general fund, non-county?
It was on the eighteen, no, it was in, wait a minute, the, oh, okay, non-general one, yeah, I did do that this week.
And that's what you're in?
Yeah.
And the copy I have is full of red numbers in column G.
And what, what does your total?
Well, I haven't made any changes tonight, so.
Well, we may need, I know, what I'm saying, as the changes that were made, I'm not sure.
Go back to the, the personnel total that you showed, and let's go from there.
Five eighty-two eight forty-three.
Okay, I have five ninety-three forty-three now, so you wanna go back and tell me, let me just read down, thirty-nine eight ninety-four, seventy-five eight ninety-eight, fifty-seven oh fifty-five, seventy-one three forty-six, fifty-six one forty, fifty-six one forty, fifty-six one forty, fifty-six one forty, thirty-nine eight ninety-five, thirty-nine eight ninety-five, sixty-eight hundred, twenty-five thousand. And then they made me change it back to ten thousand, and I thought we had a thousand.
We have twenty-five hundred.
For overtime.
For overtime, but then, but you had ten thousand in the beginning, so.
So what do I show there for overtime?
Which one's that?
Twenty-five hundred, yeah, so that needs to go to ten thousand, is that what you're saying?
No, that's what Max, she just changed it back, it was twenty-five hundred.
Okay, so I just changed it back, so are we now five eighty-two eight forty-three?
That's correct.
Okay, what's your total on the two thousands?
Sixty-seven thousand.
Okay.
See, I think that's the right number.
Yeah. She's been changing these.
Okay, so, is, let me read down what I've got now, and you tell me where I'm wrong, five thousand, three thousand. Okay, what's the first one? For office supplies.
In twenty-two one ten, there was nothing in either, either line.
Oh, one of them should be five thousand.
Well, I'm saying the copy she sent us had nothing in either line.
Okay, and I didn't. Okay, and I didn't have anything to start with tonight. So you want, you want me to take that out or leave that in? Leave the five thousand in?
One of them should say five thousand.
I'll go ahead and put one in, that way our numbers.
Okay, and then I've got three thousand, and then sixty thousand?
Yeah, the one you sent us had fifty thousand, so.
So change it back to fifty.
No, sixty.
Change it to sixty?
It's sixty.
Yeah. Okay, go ahead.
All right, and then a thousand, and then twenty thousand, a thousand, a thousand?
Hang on, because this one had twelve thousand.
Where?
Yeah, did it?
In twenty two, two ten.
Twenty two, two ten, you say twelve thousand?
That's what, the one you sent us had twelve thousand, and it should be twenty thousand.
It should? No, it should be twelve.
That's what you said, right?
That, that's what Max said.
That's what.
Oh.
But I think, I think that line item before that we were talking about, what's the line item that was changed before that?
The metal dental?
And you said sixty, I think that's, that was fifty, and I think that's what it should be fifty.
It was fifty.
So that should be fifty?
She just changed it back.
It should be fifty.
Okay.
All right.
That's what it was.
Medical and dental supplies.
All right, and then I had one thousand, what about this twelve thousand? Am I supposed to leave it twelve thousand or up to twenty? All right, and then a thousand and a thousand, do you have seventy three thousand?
Okay, you said a thousand and a thousand. In reference books, the copy you sent me, I have zero.
It should have zero?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
So then, that gives me eighty two thousand.
I've got seventy two, so where?
Seventy two is the right amount, but you need to very, help verify where that ten thousand is.
Um, that fifty?
Did you change it to fifty?
So now the total's seventy two.
Twenty two, one thirty, very.
The medical dental supply from sixty to fifty.
What do you have for twenty two, one thirty, very?
Yes. Twenty two?
One thirty.
Uh, well, there's, there's two lines there.
Oh, well, the one has nothing, the other one.
And I had fifty thousand.
Okay, that's what I got. So where are we off ten? Because I, I totaled seventy two.
Max, you agree with her at seventy two?
Seventy two, yes.
Do you, do you agree with her?
At seventy two.
And seventy two is what it was.
Okay, and then I've got a grand total of seven sixty six, seventy one.
I got seven seventy nine, seven twenty five. What do you got as a total on the, uh, three, thirty thousand?
Uh, one oh five eight, twenty eight.
That's where the difference is, so I need to get mine correct.
So am I.
What's line thirty three, oh five oh?
Thirty three... Um, fifteen hundred.
Okay, next.
Five thousand, twenty, twenty five thousand, twenty five thousand.
Yes.
Hundred and fifty, and go down twenty, or two?
One fifty on postage?
Hundred and fifty on postage.
How much?
Hundred and fifty.
Okay.
And then two thousand on travel.
Down, down to two thousand? All right.
Uh, ten thousand on communication. Thirty one, seventy eight.
That's ten grands what we put in.
Thirty one, seventy eight, seven thousand, fourteen, five hundred.
Fourteen, five hundred?
Yeah, on general, on thirty three, four sixty one.
That was a change we made tonight.
Then, the next two are zero, then two thousand.
What about the general liability?
Fourteen five, that's what it just said.
No, that was, oh, I thought that was.
Fourteen, five hundred was general liability. The next two are zero. Rebind books is two thousand. Equipment maintenance, twenty five hundred. Then four thousand, one thousand, three thousand. Quills, one oh five eight, twenty eight. You agree? For grand total, seven sixty six, seventy one. Okay.
Okay, I'll work that out later. Go ahead with the next one.
Okay, so the health department, we're done. Fund, eleven hundred and sixty nine, one one six nine, local, Road and Street. Discovered I did not have totals on line sixteen for the four thousand.
Can I just explain it by you looking up your web copy? Because I know that makes it confusing in the way I worded it.
Okay.
If you look up here, see where the cursor is? I, I messed up and did not have totals on line sixteen all over. This grand total pulled a four fifty here, thinking that was the total. And I, I was thinking that in the original budget, the highway had zero, so I called out there, talked to Renee, and she went and she verified that this is supposed to be zero. So then I put my totals in here, and then because I had five hundred thousand in there, my grand total stayed the same for this, but when I pulled those over, it changed the twenty three grand total. And I know that's a little confusing, but the bottom line is, I did not have the totals in line sixteen. And I had four hundred and fifty thousand in this one, right here, and they say it's not supposed to be, it's supposed to be zero. And so the grand total amount is supposed to be accurate.
So what's?
Which is the amount that I originally gave you. And Renee at the high, highways, the one that confirmed it.
One, four hundred and fifty in the black, add that to three hundred and fifty four, comes up to eight oh four. What you got down there? The total.
So is the eight oh four, oh oh one, the correct number?
Shouldn't this four hundred and fifty thousand be four hundred and fifty thousand, one dollar?
No, no, because the one dollar is, is the total of the thirty thousands.
Oh, yeah, true.
The four hundred and fifty is the total of the four thousands.
I'm with you. Okay, so if you add the three reds, including the one dollar, you get the eight oh four, oh oh one.
Well, yeah, yeah. That, plus that, plus that, which was the eight oh four, oh oh one.
Okay.
On line forty two thousand, um, they included fifty eight thousand for that Skidster, and we said we were going to pay for that out of one-time money. Because we, originally we had three ninety two for the adopted amount, because it was the fifth, minus the fifty eight thousand. The first, when we first talked about this. I think it was the night he was here, on our very first budget night, so, but it's still at four hundred and fifty, so I don't know if, if we're buying that Skidster or not.
Oh, I know. I already told them that we're better off to take it out of one-time money.
That's what we said we were going to do. I had it on my list the whole time, for one-time expenditures.
So it needs to come off of there?
And be three ninety two.
So that three ninety two?
Instead of four fifty on forty two thousand.
And you've got that on your one-time?
Yeah.
Expenditure was.
Up at the top, is there a third number up there?
What?
Eleven sixty nine, is there a line above that?
Right there.
So there's sixty. There's...
Does that help you?
So is everybody good on this?
Mm-hmm.
Are you brought?
Look up.
Okay.
We've been here quite a few hours today.
That's why. It was like, let's not go into a long discussion on the, the art funds. Okay, um, next up. The, um... Can't say a name here. We had a salary that was on there. For twenty twenty three.
That's, that's the, Corey George.
The thirty eight, two thirty.
Yeah, we already, we verified that, didn't we, Kathy?
Is that probation budget or another?
It's Corey's.
Prosecute.
Oh, yes, the, for Diane Williams, I think we verified that. Oh, sorry. Well, my last name is Williams, so I'm sorry.
Okay, Kathy Williams?
Kathy Williams, there you go.
Okay, so that has been correct.
Yes, because I had her ask her to back up and be triple sure we had it right, and yes, we did. Sorry.
Okay.
Tell me which one, which line that is.
That was...
Thirty three, eight thirty, maybe?
Oh, and then wrong was the file. Back on county general. Um...
It's in, it's in probation, right?
No, it's in, um, um, I'll find it. Public defender. It's the very top one. Ten eight oh three for thirty eight, two thirty one.
I think that was right.
Right, right here.
That's the one Corey called me about.
Yes, okay.
Yes. Because I promised him we would just make sure that was all.
That's why I triple checked to make sure we have it correct.
Okay.
Okay, next, next up.
Sorry?
Are you okay, Gary?
Thirty three, eight thirty, maybe?
That's what she said.
Public defenders.
Public defenders, ten eight oh three.
Oh, no, it wouldn't be thirty three.
It's ten eight oh three.
It's very top one on page, top of page fifty one.
Oh, yeah, the thirty eight, two thirty one, that's right.
Thirty eight, two thirty one.
Which budget?
Down to thirty seven, six, seventy four.
We've been through that once.
We took it back to the twenty three.
So we want to make sure it's thirty eight. Just got it or wrong, I'm sure.
Okay, the next is... The total of county general was thirty eight thousand, six ninety one, six hundred and ninety one thousand, seven forty five. And that was to be the advertised amount. What was actually advertised?
The thirty six, one sixty eight, eight forty one. Do we explain the, um, C thing? The, the form three, form?
Advertizing.
Yeah, remember, you want to have it updated down.
We had to advertise.
But, but that's what was in Form One.
Right, currently, I should. Somehow, it was put in when we started at thirty eight, oh ninety one, seven forty five.
Yeah.
And it stuck. It, so we had to go ahead and advertise that to make sure that we got it done.
Make a noise countdown.
Form, Form One on Gateway shows the thirty six one.
Yes.
Form Three shows the thirty eight.
The advertising rate of thirty eight is better than advertising it too low.
Yeah.
Right. Because if we advertise it too low, then we get screwed on the, uh, money end. So I just went ahead and advertised it at the, I can't even see it.
Thirty eight?
Thirty eight thou, thirty eight million.
Okay.
Protecting the county, and thereby allowing, when the state comes in and they start going through this stuff, they'll, they'll make the adjustments they didn't make.
This email says, request amount that will be published is thirty six million, one sixty eight, eight forty one.
I need to explain how this works. I cannot put, remember how the prosecutor had, all, prosecutor had all those, you know, all the...
So did.
When I, all those that I show listed were requests that you denied, and I cannot put those numbers into Lao, which then gets uploaded to Gateway, unless I have a account number.
Account number.
And so, I could not, I...
So, so when you say published, that doesn't mean advertised?
Advertising was thirty eight.
That's what it means. When we put it into Gateway, go from Lao to Gateway, it is considered advertised.
And Form One on Gateway shows the thirty six thousand, because I couldn't put, I couldn't put all that thirty eight over there because I don't have line item numbers, and Lao won't, Lao and Gateway won't accept it without those, and that's a huge hunk of money. So on Form One of Gateway, it shows this thirty six thousand, which is what I was saying was published. When we actually did the upload, him and our, Wayne Hudson, our representative, previously had guessed at thirty eight thou, or thirty eight million something, and we saw the difference, but Mark went ahead and left the thirty eight million in the Form Three line item, which is the amount that's published. But all that I could actually put in Gateway is this thirty six.
It's a thirty six.
And when I sent you the email, I thought that it was going to be the published amount, but when we actually did it yesterday, we was able to end up having the, it'd be the part that was published.
Which doesn't hurt you.
It always should be thirty eight. It should be the higher number.
Yeah.
Absolutely. The thirty eight does not hurt you.
But you can go down.
Right, but I'm just trying to explain what item by item.
Published and advertised is not the same thing. We think of advertised as what you've advertised.
Well, no, I consider published and advertised the same thing. It's just that what I'm trying to say is, I could not literally upload to Gateway all of those that didn't have line items.
That's fine.
It, it, we're better off in...
It's what's in the newspaper, what we consider published.
Right. Now they're saying, and I don't, I don't like it, but now they're saying, once I hit, put it in Gateway...
It's green button.
That's advertised.
You don't have to do it in the newspaper.
And my only...
But he still did.
Well, my only, my objection to that is, there aren't many taxpayers look, that will look in Gateway to find out what you guys are spending.
Max says probably zero.
Yeah, it's, I just don't like that. I think the, the, um, the taxpayers are entitled to know what you're proposing to spend, and by just uploading it to Gateway, does not notify them, in my opinion, of what, what the true...
That's fine.
Thing is. So I had to go to the thirty eight million, protected the county, it's considered advertised, and, uh, that's just where we sit right now.
That's fine.
I just want to make sure because we haven't talked about...
Races.
Any employee increases.
That's correct.
And had we been on the low end, we, the lower amount, that's all that we could do.
Yeah, you would've, you would've been done at that point.
Yeah. It's an important, but I'm glad you did the thirty eight million.
I've been this way before. So I would tell you, that's, that was a no-brainer for me. I've been this way before. So I would tell you, that's, that was a no-brainer for me.
All right, all the emails that I've received regarding the amount have been taken into account. We'll need to
We didn't put anything, yeah.
see where we are on an updated, um, an updated, uh, uh,
Total.
spreadsheet, what, what our total difference is. I will tell you that, um, it was published on August the seventh, um, as the estimate, they'll, they'll come back here in October and tell us
October, right.
tell us the rule number, but the increase in income tax dollars is about two hundred and fifty-one thousand. It's a little more than that, but it's about two hundred and fifty-one thousand. So-
Where did you get that figure?
Uh, I, um-
I've got all those figures over there that I estimated, I just wanted to see.
I think, wasn't that Wayne Hudson sent that?
No, I had to make a request to the Department of Local Government Finance. I wanted to know, I, Mike, I just simply emailed him and asked him, do you have the certified, um, shares?
They do.
Amount yet? And he emailed me back and, or I, I have no idea who emailed me back, but they attached it.
I have, I have what I have estimated property taxes, um, assessed value, miscellaneous revenue, what else is, we were dealing with? Um, cash balances at the end of, of June twenty-three, what I estimate the cash balances to be in, uh, December thirtieth first of this year. And I can get all that stuff to you, which you're going to need to know, um, as we go along here. But those are the way that, the final budget will be put together after you determine what you want to do. If you determine what you want to do is over, what the state says that they will allow, because they're the ones that are going to be making that determination. And, uh, right now, we're looking at a four percent increase in, um, oh, I got it all over here.
Maximum levy?
Yeah, about four percent increase in the maximum levy. So, uh, all of those will be entered in after you determine what you want to spend. If they come back and they say, you're good, then there won't, there won't be any more to it from council's role. If they come back and they say, no, you're, um, you're over the maximum levy by a certain amount, and we're going to come back and go through this and you'll have to cut.
Right, but, you know, we're, we're going to be, I think we're going to be fine on it.
With the ending balance will be.
Yeah, the-
In watching you and looking at all those other determinations of money that I've got over there, I don't see why you can't fund the budgets that you're proposing. I've got a problem with word tomorrow to deal with that I didn't know I had, but, um, and all of the figures, all of the figures that I have, such as miscellaneous revenue and all that, all of those can change as we get closer to the end of the year.
Yeah, and they will.
And they will.
The, um, things that we need to talk about at the October fourth finance meeting is what dollar amount we want to put in for one-time money for projects. We've done three million in the past. With this extra money that we have, there's going to be a lot of projects going on. There's probably some amount there that we can, we can lower that. We, we've actually done most of the heavy projects in cost, so, uh, we may be able to lower that and that number be, uh, lower into the future. So we'll take a look at that in conjunction with the, uh, Irwin report and getting us to the midpoint and seeing where we are. But all the other numbers, unless something comes in late, are all taken care of. So that will be what we talk about, um, in finance on October fourth. If, should we need to have something before, um, the uh, workshop?
Oh, yeah.
We could have another number, but, um, you know, if we come up with the, the increase, then you're going to need to go through and change those numbers on Lao. Or on this.
Yeah, yes, and then I have to go change the Lao.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, okay. Technically, Lao has the requested in it now. Once you get it all finalized, then I need to go into Lao. And everything that was in the twenty-four adopted, I need to put that into Lao. Then I need to upload that to Gateway.
I mean, there's a, there's a, a good chance, I'm just saying this here early, there's a good chance that all of those one thousand accounts will need to be changed.
Yeah, cross the board raise plus.
If we do midpoint and we do a raise or whatever we do, then we're gonna, that's gotta be a lot.
Can you tell me how they practically have done it in the past? Because I've been trying to think ahead, because that's a lot to do.
It is.
Add a column per tab and then like put a formula in equals whatever you had times the percentage you've got. Then that will do, put that in and then I copy it over into the other. Do you have any better way of doing it?
Do you have any insight on it, Jeff, what?
The challenge here, I'm assuming you're, you're looking at the Irwin report.
Yeah.
And the Irwin recommendations are different percentage increases based on classification. And so there will not be one formula that you can, you can put in. You'll have to look at each line item individually.
And within each budget, there would be multiple pages, not-
Multiple classifications that would be raises at different percentages.
Yeah.
And then if there's a percentage increase on that, it will be in putting the, the Irwin report, or taking the Irwin report numbers and putting a percentage.
So you know there'd be, we choose four hundred, roughly four hundred changes based on all of our employees that'll have, uh, different percentage increases based on the Irwin report.
So I'm hearing what you're saying. Does anybody know an easy way for me to accomplish it? Because, I mean, to me, that's going to be very time-consuming.
It'll be very time-consuming.
That's why, that's why I'm-
He's warning you.
I'm warning you now.
So when will-
Kim, do you?
When you hear that.
I, I won't get it, I'll, I'll cover forth, right?
What I've done in the past, like the auditor kind of did her own thing with Lao, but then what I did, Pam and payroll clerk, we went behind closed doors and we did our separate document, which is a salary ordinance. That's how we possibly could do a double check.
And then she can-
We don't want to get those combined together, we want them separate, but we'll be doing the salary ordinance. And it is formulas, and they should match, and it's line by line, takes hours.
And then that's my double check.
Yeah.
And it's always rounded up. I don't do cents, correct?
We're not doing pennies.
Yeah.
No, we round up.
Okay.
And
And I have basically-
Do you have any, um, advice for them in this regards?
Well, not on the last side because I don't work in Lao.
Well-
I don't?
It wouldn't be the last side. I would do it on the spreadsheet first.
I'll think of it.
And then, then there's a, yeah, it, it's, it's frustrating to go from the Excel to Lao, but, I mean, I can, I can do that.
We can do salary ordinance, then I can't, I mean, salary ordinance, I just can't.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, this side with the Excel spreadsheet and all the tweak into the Lao and then it, it, yeah, it's very, very time-consuming and tedious, but, so basically you're saying, I'll get that information October fourth and two weeks later, I have to have it all done. It's the deadline, right? Okay.
Yeah, you may need to, you may need a little bit of part-time help with that from somebody.
Well, the problem with that is they're not going to know what we want to do.
Yeah.
And-
Well, unless, because our, we hired a new grant person that's starting October second. And she's very good with, with understanding Excel and that, so I think she could possibly, you know, help me, yeah.
Tony, can I? Then I have one last question. She has a question, one last question.
Beth, have you developed the one-time list before you can share that with the others?
Yeah, let me find it. Tony, I have one last question. So in our meeting that we had last week, in Fund twenty-five oh one, which is County User Fee Fund, we, we found some issues, just the one I want to bring up will affect the budget for twenty-four, the jury pay. So we have created, Mark's department has created a fund out of that for jury pay and moved the money out of there that should be jury pay. My question for the twenty-twenty-four budget is jury pay currently sits within two other budgets, Court Services and Superior Three, I believe.
Right.
So going forward, who gets, who gets the money out of there first? Or do we want to put both of those together, take them out of those budgets and put them someplace else? I, I don't know that, the answer to that.
The fewer jury fee
Jury fee pay, yeah.
Pays, the happier I'll be.
Yeah.
If, if, it's first come, first served, as far as I'm concerned, and-
It, it, it doesn't matter.
But the problem is it is not fair to leave it up to their bookkeeper to decide it comes out of twenty-five, the fund, County User Fee Fund, or it comes out of their budget line.
We, we need to probably back up for everybody else here. There is, there is a fund, number
Twenty-five oh one.
Called-
County user fees.
And there are about nine, eight or nine things.
Several items. I think it's seven, actually.
And, and those have never been, been broken out before. Ron Cross in the meeting said, we need to, you know, for each of those, one of them is
Jury pay fee.
Jury fees, and we can pay it out of there. It, it was going to have to be allocated and he said, go back to, what, twenty sixteen?
So, so what we did is we, Debbie went to twenty sixteen and within that, within that fund, there are different, I'll just call them account numbers. And these all come from, generated from deferral P payments and different things that people that get in trouble with the law have to pay or choose to pay rather than go to jail. So anyway, within that one big fund, or all these subcategories, I'll call them, jury pay, fees one, prosecutors, that was the problem with seventy-one oh two, some, well, some things are going in different funds. But, but unknown, unknowns to some of the auditors.
So they've all been allocated now?
Yes, they have other funds, so just depending on who was doing the receipt, whether it went into this county user fee at the subaccount, or if it went into the actual fund that was already created. So over, and that's not just one auditor, that's years and years of going. So we went back to twenty sixteen, what's the total, which ones, which category were those put in for? So now if we divide them out and put them, okay, this would be a fee that would go to the, uh, the prosecutor or this is the jury pay fee, or I don't even remember. Part of it was, uh, law enforcement funds for education.
The one, the big one that we saw was jury fees could be paid, a certain amount could be paid out of here. We didn't know what the allocation, I haven't seen how much, what the seven category allocation is.
No, we just got that today.
But, um, we need to make Court Services and Superior Three aware that there's money there. They need to use those.
See, that was my question. How do you want to, who gets to spend those first and next and? But I don't want to leave it as not fair to the auditor's office to say, well, if there's money there, take it out of this one or take it out of our fund. That, that's not the way to do that, so.
That's why we need, we need Court Services and Superior Three, whoever codes it over there, we want them coding it to take it out of this eighty-nine. You're going to have
Twenty-five oh three, sorry.
Twenty-five oh three, you're going to have me having all these numbers.
Seriously, you're going to know the numbers soon.
Yeah, um, that they need to first be, be using the, the fees out of there instead of
So, so then Mark's people, if it's coded twenty-five oh three for the claims clerk, she's going to look there. If there's no money there, or if there's a hundred dollars there, use that, then go to Superior Three or whoever it is, rather than change, put those two out of those budgets into someplace else. Is, is that right?
Um, if we tell the two people who are responsible, code it out of this, um, whatever
Twenty-five oh three.
Twenty-five oh three, and if, if that gets down, then you come to us and they use it out of the general fund.
Well, they have it in, yeah, out of their budget, they have those lines in the general fund. So are you okay with that? Then Linda would go first to twenty-five oh three and then?
You need to use the twenty-five oh, that money first.
Three, right, okay.
That is, you have what, seven hundred thousand in there or whatever?
Yes, that's the whole total.
I know, but I'm just saying.
Right, right, it was, yeah.
So basically, when Linda gets down to, oops, this one needs split, she will have to go back to whichever Court Services, Superior Three, and let them know, so they can change their paperwork to this X amount will be out of their fund and this much is out of the twenty-five oh three.
That's why I was trying not to have to go back to them to change the paperwork. Because that's a lot of going back.
But they won't have clue of where they're getting down to.
Okay, we'll figure it out. I just want to make sure we didn't want to change anything out of the twenty-four budget.
So Barry asked, uh, real quick about the one-time money that we have said what we're going to use one-time money for. And it's not a lot compared to other years. We had fifty-five thousand in the ditch fund. The fifty-three thousand for the GIS flyover, I have that marked out. Did we, did we change that somewhere, is it for somewhere?
I think we took it out of this budget.
I think we put it in. Okay, so the fifty-three for the GIS, um, thirty-five thousand for a floor machine for the jail, fifty-eight thousand for a skidster for the highway department.
How much?
Fifty-eight. Uh, we had forty-five hundred dollars for coroner's equipment. I don't know what that was.
How much?
Forty-five hundred dollars that we were saying we would spend out of our one-time money. It was something he needed.
But I considered to.
I can't remember what it was. And then we, we had fifty-six thousand for the sheriff's car boxes. Didn't we do something else with that?
Since he's not getting as many cars.
He doesn't need as many.
Yeah.
We've got to be, we've got to be all of that.
Yeah, that, right now, that was kind of our one-time money list.
And we have a couple of other things that, uh, might be considered either there or, or put in his general fund budget that we need to talk about at some point.
Oh, we didn't talk about all his changes tonight, did we?
Well, Tony was going through emails and he apparently didn't send Tony an email.
Well, Tony forgot, he, you sent that email with all his answers to our cuts. We didn't do that, we didn't talk about that one tonight. We need to do that.
They can pull that together.
Remember the sheriff's thing, he got that email from Barry.
Yeah, I didn't see that email. I mean, I-
He sent it to all of us. It came from Barry, but we do need to deal with that next.
And maybe that's why I didn't- Well, no, I'm, I was saying it, it was about something on us.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Wait, 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 wait. I do want to talk about what Debbie is saying. Because at the time, we had the meeting with the prosecutor, we didn't know how much it was.
Right.
Do you know how much is, um, in twenty-five oh three?
Oh, twenty-five oh three is, you're doing good. That's the jury pay one and it's approximately forty-five hundred dollars, I think.
Forty-five hundred?
Yes, but we only moved, we only moved the money, oh, it's six thousand. We only moved the money for this year into that. If you're talking about the whole big pot, that's twenty-five oh one.
There's sixty-three hundred and seven and a-
Twenty-five, twenty-five oh one is six hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Right.
Six eighty-eight ninety-six. But we've taken this year's jury pay out of there and put it in its separate fund.
Somebody-
But weren't all of those going to be allocated?
We're going to, Debbie, Debbie pulled them up and looked at by what, what a, account they were receipted into. And then where, she's got the percentage and we just haven't gotten beyond that, but yes.
Okay, then we may- Okay, then we may want to address that. What I'm saying is, you know, and then, uh, Judge Donahue, um, alluded to the lower amount we had in, in jury fees. It, there's some money here that we can use, that we will use, because, and we do want to use it and there's more money that continuously goes in there, but, um, we want to use that and we might.
Go to those things, yeah.
I mean, we may want to leave it in their budgets irregardless.
Then they pick a lot where we know.
But that's another area that we could lower and if you can remind us on October fourth, when we know what that, that balance is.
I'll give it to you when we get it all done, I'll email it to everybody.
Motion to adjourn. A second, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
We are done, thank you.